Right. Okay, I'd like to call to order a city council work session meeting Monday, May 6, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Today, we were going to talk about the 50-year plan, and we're joined with Planning Commission, a few members of our Planning Commission. Take it away. I guess, are we, Lori, are you doing any? Going to run the show on this one.
Lori will do that. She'll do a good job.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for being here tonight. So, tonight, we have with us Beth Goodman with Echo Northwest, and we're going to run through the slides here. We have a slideshow up for you. We are going over the urban growth boundary expansion areas that we've been studying.
Okay, I'm Beth Goodman with Echo Northwest, as Lori said. So, this is a project that we've been working on for, I think, about three years now, almost. And what we've got accomplished at this point is we've done work on the comprehensive plan, updating those policies. We have completed the economic opportunities analysis, which tells you how much land you need for commercial and industrial uses. The city completed the housing needs analysis, which tells how much land is needed for housing uses. We also completed an analysis of other land needs, which is about things like park land need, municipal land needs, that kind of thing, school land needs. We've been working with our partner, 3J Consulting, who's been working on the development code update, so a lot of those things have come to you. And we're also working on the analysis of urban growth boundary and urban reserves. That's an alternatives analysis. Coming up, we'll have the 50-year plan, which is a summary of the work that we've done at this point, and then the adoption process, which is its own complicated process, which involves, we'll have done some work sessions with you all. It involves hearings with the Planning Commission and the City Council about the adopting the EOA, the HNA, the analysis of other land needs, the development code changes, the comprehensive plan changes, and the urban growth boundary analysis. And then, you have to work with your partners at the county to co-adopt the urban growth boundary and urban reserves analysis, because those analyses are essentially, moving the urban growth boundary and establishing urban reserves are essentially in agreement with the county. So, there's a whole process for working with the Planning, the Planning Commission at the county and the Board of Commissioners at the county. That's what's coming up here through 2024. I expect we'll probably be through adoption, I'm guessing, in early 2025. So, if you will go to the next slide, that gives us the summary of the work we've done to date. So, I'm not going to repeat all of the, the project deliverables that we went through. The public process, we started looking at community visioning with the community conversations, discussions, the community events at several of your annual town meetings, your farmer's market, and your adventure fest. We had a few surveys for visioning, and that was visioning for what would the 50-year plan look like. We've been doing updates with Lori through your newsletter. We've had 15 meetings of your Stakeholder Advisory Committee, your SAC. Final of those meetings will be held in August, and then upcoming are your hearings. Before I go on, if there's questions as we go through, Mr. Mayor, would you like to have those questions come up? So, before I go on, are there any questions about the process or what we've done?
I do have one, and I'm sure you probably said it, but is this ending with 50-year plan, we will adopt, then, then start the process for a UGB expansion? Or does UGB expansion part of this process in that when we're done with everything, it all ends at the same time?
So, this project does include the hearings that would involve adoption of the UGB expansion. So, the 50-year plan really is just a standalone document. It doesn't get adopted. It just summarizes everything under one cover of what this project entailed. But, we will do local hearings at the city level first for UGB expansion and adoption of all the products. Once the city has signed off on it, then it does need to be adopted by Columbia County as well. It is a land use hearing process at the county, so it's a comp plan map amendment for them. It's going to change their comp plan map, just like it'll change ours, to exclude land from their entity and include that additional land into ours. And that is all part of this process. So, at the end, there would be a UGB expansion and urban reserves, presumably.
So, that could be final by spring of next year?
About a year from now.
And if there's delay, you know, more hearing, it could delay, I mean, if there's expansion, it could...
Yeah. And this is why, this is why, and we'll have this agenda item later in the night, for the addition of hearings at the county level and even beyond what they've requested. And I can summarize as well during that agenda item what the previous process looked like for the city and how many hearings were held during the 2011 UGB expansion. I think it just provides some good feedback and kind of frame of reference.
Seeing that expansion, you're guesstimating hopefully a year from now.
Everything final.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? So, then, looking as a review at the land need in the areas for urban growth boundary expansions, I believe we talked about a lot of this back in November, but, no, November's a long time ago, so next slide, please. So, when we look at this, what we're thinking about is land need for the 50-year period in the right-hand column, 2023 to 73. When you think about the urban growth boundary expansion, that's the 2023 to 43 period, and then the urban reserves is 2043 to 73. So, you can see there, under each type of land category, what we're looking at. So, for commercial, we're looking at 10 acres for commercial over the next 20 years, plus a little bit of land for semi-public uses. If I'm remembering that correctly, that's mostly for municipal semi-public uses. For housing, you've got a small, not, not that small, but you've got a surplus of land for low-density housing. You've got a deficit for medium-density housing, and for high-density housing, you've got a very small deficit, one acre, because we did some land use efficiency measures, which I'll talk about in a few moments. And then, for public land, what you've got is 10 acres that would be planned designated eventually public, and another acre for semi-public. And semi-public includes both land for municipal, and I believe it also includes land for churches and, and other exempt organizations.
Yeah, and I also have a note here, it includes cemeteries as well.
Yeah, I don't think you're planning necessary for new cemeteries, but, but cemeteries is, comes under the semi-public. So, as we did the analysis of that, we considered the existing land for that. And so, that makes a 59-acre urban growth boundary expansion. And then, we're looking at another 360 acres for, for your urban reserves to accommodate growth over the 30-year period after. So, all told, 419 acres. Now, we mentioned land use efficiencies on the side. When you are doing an urban growth boundary expansion and you find that you don't have enough land, the city has three choices. It really only has one or two choices. You can consider land use efficiency measures that increase the efficient use of land inside the urban growth boundary. You can do a UGB expansion or both. You can't really do a UGB expansion without considering land use efficiency measures. So, the land use efficiency measures that we looked at are rezoning some selected parcels, which I believe we've talked about, and I think we've got a map here if we want to look at those. And then, an increase in density for your residential plan designations of 3%. That follows with the changes that you've talked with Heather about making to your zoning code changes. So, changes to lot size, I believe, in your medium-density areas, and maybe your high-density areas. It's been a little while since I looked at those.
Changes to low density.
No changes to low density. Now, the 3% increase, that number is very, seems very specific. And it is specific, because there's a piece in the statutes that basically says that your land use efficiency measures for that kind of zoning change are limited to 3% above historical densities. So, like, if your historical density was five dwelling units an acre, you could increase it to 5.15 dwelling units an acre. That's a 3% increase, without quantifiable proof about why you'd be getting a higher density than what we're talking about. So, we're really limited with how much additional density we can consider that you'll get from land use efficiency measures around housing. Lot of words. Are there any questions there? Okay. Next slide, please. All right, so then, stepping on from that, so we know we have 59 acres that we're looking for, for the UGB, and 360 acres for urban reserves. So, we started the UGB expansion process analysis. What you're seeing on the map on the left, the solid black line, that's kind of like a cloud all around us, Scappus' existing UGB, that's a half acre out from the existing UGB. Half mile, indeed, not a half acre. That was pretty funny. And the dotted line is a full mile out. You're required to look at areas all around the urban growth boundary for a half mile, and you're required to look at what are called exceptions areas for a full mile. Exceptions areas are areas that are in county zoning that isn't for farm or forest use. It's not high-value farm or forest use. So, what we've put here is the gray area, those are all resource zoning. We're not considering any UGB expansion in the gray area. We're looking all at exception zoning. So, when we look at the priority scheme in ORS 197A, 285, the first priority is urban reserves. Don't currently have urban reserves. The second priority is exceptions land and non-resource land. There's no non-resource land around Scappus, nothing that's defined in statute as non-resource land. So, it's all exceptions areas. You've got a lot of those, well more than 1,000 acres, well more than that. So, we don't go under the third priority, which is marginal land, which this county doesn't have, or farm and forest land that's not predominantly high-value, or high-value farm and forest land. We don't get to third, fourth, or fifth priorities. So, we're looking at the areas, I don't know if that's yellow or cream-colored, but one of those two colors on that map. And then, if we go to the next slide. And then, we think about constraints. So, you don't want to bring in land that's highly constrained, or you want to bring in as little constrained land as you can, because you can't build on constrained land. So, the constraints we're looking at are floodplain and floodway. Those are in blue. Slopes greater than 25%, and I think those are in the dark red, and then areas with higher, very high landslide hazards, which are in the slightly lighter red. And so, you can see, unsurprisingly, Scappus is surrounded by all of those kind of constraints. So, you're limited to where you can go. On the next slide, please. So, this slide, please go back then. Sorry, sir.
Are these, are these constraints statutory?
They're statutory somewhat. So, floodplain, floodway, I would say, is... They are allowed statutorily. They are not required. I would say floodway, so where the river flows, that, that just doesn't make any sense. You can't, that, that's bad. Floodplain is going to get increasingly hard to build on in Oregon as we have some new FEMA rules coming down. The state very much encourages cities to consider floodplain as unbuildable as floodways. Steep slopes are certainly mentioned, the 25% slopes are mentioned in the statutes, or actually in the administrative rules, as something that is a prohibitive constraint. You're not required to consider it a prohibitive constraint. And then, landslide hazards, they're a natural hazard, they're what I, what is a goal seven hazard. And I think that there is some very good reason for health and safety for, for not including land that is in high or very high landslide hazards.
Thank you. Yeah, they're all very practical constraints. I was just curious.
I do have a question. Why, like, right by the St. John's Bridge, why are there so many constructions on a steep slope that's, that obviously is more of a landslide hazard than what we have here?
Well, this, I assume that a lot of that was developed previously. It's not illegal to develop it. It's certainly possible in terms of engineering feasibility, but when you're looking at what land you want to bring into your urban growth boundary, I would advise the city not to look at land that's really hard to serve, or that's particularly dangerous. So, that, that's why. I mean, technically, you can do it, but technically, you can build in California on the edge of cliffs, too. Or at the Oregon coast on the edge of cliffs. Right. So, then, we're required to take all of our areas that aren't constrained. Do they have a copy of this in front of them so they can see the map a little bit better? Okay. So, areas like Area 11 in the bottom west side, or Area 12 in the bottom west side of the city, those have a lot of hash marks around, along them, and a little bit of the yellow peeping through. Those are highly constrained areas. An area like Area Number 8 at the south part of the map, that's unconstrained and exceptions areas. So, we are required to divide up all of the existing exceptions areas into areas that are subareas, study areas, that are no larger than 100 acres. So, some of the subareas seem a little bit arbitrary exactly where the boundaries are, and that's because we needed to make 100-acre or smaller subareas.
May I clarify something real quick? So, that area at 8, 9, 10, 11, what roads correspond to that, just for orientation?
Dutch Canyon Road to the north is along the northern edge. I know of at least 9 and 10, or 10, rather. I'd have to, we'll be looking at some close-up maps in a few minutes.
Yeah, it goes out. Eight. Nine is a little... It looks like the hand sort of runs through it.
Is that all that area at the end of Callahan that has all those already divided lots, you know?
I think that's an Area 6.
Yeah, that's a different area. Sir, up maps are going to help.
So, all told, can you go back? I'm sorry. All told, in our 23 study areas, we've got 1,525 total acres, of them, 1,028 are unconstrained. And then, we've broke them down into 23 subareas for, for closer examination. And we're going to run through each of those subareas as we go along here. So, once we've established those 23 subareas, we get to evaluate each of the subareas based on what are called Goal 14. Goal 14 is the urban growth, urbanization goal in Oregon's land use system that requires urban, urban growth boundaries. So, the Goal 14 locational factors, they have to be considered for each of those 23 subareas. So, can the area efficiently meet the city's needs? So, the way we've operationalized that is considering land that's developable, developable, and if it's residential, say, it connects well with existing neighborhoods. If you look, or when we look at Area 4, the little tiny area on the east side of the city, you'll see that that is right next to a neighborhood. If we're looking for land for commercial, then we're looking for connections, say, with Highway 30, for instance. Can public services and utilities be extended in the area in a cost-effective and logical way? So, you don't want to bring in land, if you can avoid it at all, that can't be serviced. You've already got some of that land, land that's in the, I call it the foot, it also looks like an amoeba piece to me, that sticks out to the west and the south. You don't want to do more of that, and in fact, if some of this action can make servicing that area more viable, then that might be a good choice for the city. What ec, what impacts would the development have on the environment, the local economy, and community life? That's referred to as an EC analysis. It's a qualitative analysis that looks at all of the areas and identifies for each of those, each of those things, what the advantages are and, or disadvantages of particular areas. And then, what impacts would development have on nearby farm or forest outside of the UGB and outside of these study areas? So, you wouldn't necessarily want to bring in an area that would create a big conflict with farm and forest land. But, these are already exceptions areas, that's a little bit less of a concern here. But, as we're walking through each of the next slides, we're thinking about those Goal 14 locational criteria. As we go to the next slide, what we've done here is we've highlighted the areas in red that are stronger candidates for inclusion in the, in the UGB expansion or urban reserves. And we're going to walk through each of these areas. If you go to the next slide, I think we say, the areas that are not highlighted here, sort of grayed out, they're a forfeit, a forfeit for efficiently meeting the city's housing and commercial land needs. They're not necessarily adjacent to the urban growth boundary, which makes them not a good choice, or they would create other difficulties. They also have higher service, higher costs for extending public facilities or utilities, considering the distance from the city and the existing utilities, the need for higher-cost investments, such as pump stations, that kind of thing, and other characteristics that increase cost. And we've been working with Chris, as well as Lori and NJ, on, on all of this analysis, because Echo Northwest is, you know, we're not engineers, so we need to work with the city's engineering staff. All right, so I was going to walk through the pros and cons of each of the subareas, if that's okay? So, Subarea 1 and Subarea 2 are up to the north of the city, along Highway 30. Subarea 1 is directly on Highway 30, and Lori, you can probably talk about the existing landowners or development in these areas. It's zoned for rural, rural residential, and we're considering it for meeting commercial land needs, possibly for the urban reserves. The reason not immediately for the urban growth boundary expansion is that, based on discussions with Chris, that would be a more costly area to serve, so it would make more sense to look at it over the longer term. Whereas, Subarea 2 is just above the airport, and we're looking at it for commercial uses, possibly for inclusion in the urban growth boundary, in large part because the cost of infrastructure would be lower comparatively. All right, next slide. Subarea 4, this is the little area off to the east side. It is next to existing residential neighborhoods. It has an existing mobile home park in it that covers, oh, let's just call it the top western, northwestern corner of this, so about a quarter of the area. So, in bringing that in, you would have the existing manufactured home park would be able to connect to water and wastewater services, solving a problem with failing septic systems. And then, the rest of the area there would be potentially developable when the landowners were ready, and were ready to annex. So, that area has lower costs. Yes, sir.
Like, the bottom two right corners, they would not be able to come into the city until one other one touches. I mean, they, they can't jump. So, they, they can't come into the city till someone else does. I mean, you work your way out. So, in some of these areas, you want to make sure that you pick one that doesn't touch, then it may never come in, because people ahead of them may not.
And when you're looking at a 50-year plan, then I think you have more chance of more of the areas coming in over the 50-year period, but you're certainly right, you could be bringing in areas to the UGB that the landowners adjacent to them may simply not want to annex.
We couldn't extend Elm Street to get to that bottom corner one, but they say we want to come into city if other ones haven't yet. There are exceptions.
There, there is a potential for that. My understanding is that's sort of somewhat considered a cherry-stem annexation at that point, and so I would want to work with legal counsel to discuss that.
It's basically creating kind of an island, isn't it?
It is, yeah. And so, cities should develop in a uniform way, which is the need for having a parcel, abutting city limits before it annexes in. So, you're not kind of jumping across, because again, it comes down to being able to serve those properties with utilities efficiently. And if there are no utilities stubbed to that area, you know, what's the likelihood of someone's, you know, basically extending sewer or water all the way to the east, because there's interceding properties that wouldn't get served, and it would be a really more of an expensive thing to do. So, it kind of works itself out a little bit in that way, but it would be cost-prohibitive to serve that parcel, potentially.
It would look good, because almost everything but two touched city property already.
And it's, it's solving another health and safety problem.
It is, yes.
What Lori has said is that the mobile home park has talked about wanting to come in for a while.
Yeah, they, they have an ongoing septic issue that they would like to solve. They're okay for now, but it is something we definitely would like to help them out by bringing this area into the UGB so that they could, as you can see, they're, they're already abutting city limits, so they could apply for annexation once they're in.
Fish in a blank, I have a question. So, would that be the most serious con of this hand that you're talking about, what you were talking about earlier, is that neighbors surrounding them, they refuse to participate in this?
Yeah, and that's just, you know...
Because I don't see a lot of it here as a con, most of it as a pro. Just wondering where the con comes in.
Well, the con comes in with the costs of infrastructure, honestly. None of this is, is necessarily low cost. And so, the city will have to look at, you know, none of this is uniformly low cost. Parts of it are less expensive in some areas, and parts of it are more expensive in some areas, and that detail is, is all in the analysis.
So, the lower, medium is actually still costly.
I mean, you know, everything's costly.
These days, Bill. I will say, though, that it, like, for instance, this Subarea 4, you know, you have water and sewer right in East Columbia Avenue, so at least certainly on the northern end, they're set up well for connecting to services.
Just a follow-up question, would they be required to hook into the sewer system?
No, uh-uh, no. And properties cannot connect unless they're in city limits, so that's really the kind of impetus to annex in, because likely, they would like to have those services. There is a way to get there without annexation if there's some kind of a health concern with septic. However, that process still requires that they sign an annexation agreement first, and it will specify how soon they need to annex in afterwards. It's used very occasionally.
Are there any other questions about Area 4? All right, let's go down south to Areas 5, 6, and 7. These areas are complex. They're along Highway 30. There's a little tiny strip of Area 5 that is to the east of Highway 30, but everything else is to the west of Highway 30. In discussions, it was pretty clear that Areas 5 and 7, sorry, 5 and 7 are pretty desirable. Not all of 7 necessarily, because you've got some pretty good constraints going on in the southwest part of that. Part of what we're working on with city staff at this point is sitting down and literally drawing lines on the map to figure out which parcels make sense, because you're going to bring in some parcels that have some constraints on them. You just don't want to bring in a huge amount of land that has constraints. And once you get down to looking at some of these parcels, they're really weird-shaped. So, one of them on, in Area 7, literally has this sort of, I don't know, lightning shape to it. It's so that the, the parcel isn't landlocked, essentially. I'm pretty confident that we'll be looking at a big chunk of the northeast part of Area 7, and probably a good chunk of Area 5. Parts of Area 6, where you have some areas that are already platted, might well make sense in terms of connectivity between Areas 6 and 7. But, Area 6 is, is interesting and complex. So, I'm, I'm not sure where we're going to land on, on that. We'll, we'll be talking that over.
A quick one then, on like 7, if you went down like six, seven property spots, and he decides he wants... he wants to come into the city, and he's got this flag lot that barely touches Old Portland Road, he could annex in, let's say, any one of those. And then the city required to, anyone that isn't in this, then the city is required to hook them up with water and sewer?
So again, this is where it comes back down to infrastructure. We don't have water and sewer all the way down Old Portland Road in that area. So if they wanted to connect to services, you know, and they're further down Old Portland Road, say even halfway down Section 7 on Old Portland, there's nothing to connect to unless they want to pay to extend water and sewer from essentially like Callahan and Old Portland intersection.
That's where sewer currently ends, Dutch Canyon Estates area?
Yes, yeah.
Would that be?
Callahan and Old Portland, so it's like, yeah, right in that, right in that general area.
Okay. If it was on the other side of Old Portland Road, it would just, and you say, oh, we could just bring it right under the road, that's not...
Chris could respond to that if he were here, but he's not, so I don't want to speak for him. Yeah. So there's just, this is again, the reason for having the city incrementally expand outward.
So SubArea 5, we're thinking is probably urban reserve area. It's further away from the existing services. SubArea 6, whatever of it may come in, would probably be urban reserve, a little bit of it might be urban growth boundary. And on the next page, SubArea 7 would probably be largely residential, but probably some commercial, potentially. And we're thinking about that as possibly urban reserve, sorry, urban growth boundary, thinking about what's more serviceable sooner. So, and again, we'll be working out with staff, literally drawing on the maps.
And when you're looking through these maps, I get one general idea that, okay, the strengths of where it's residential versus commercial development here, so you can identify the basic key areas for that. Because 50 years from now, whatever, people think in terms of, there's a shopping center popping up somewhere, or there's something else popping up to serve their needs. Where are we going to put it? Because we don't have the room to do so.
Well, and in terms of UGB, that would get designated commercial or residential. But in terms of establishing urban reserves, that does not get designated. It's just kind of a holding place, essentially, which is land that would then, when we do need a UGB expansion again, would be the next priority, or the first priority to expand your UGB into. And at that point, based on the need then, you could decide, should it be commercial or should it be residential?
Okay, going on to 8, 9, and 10. So SubArea 8 has a few constraints, and it's adjacent to your existing residential neighborhoods. We're thinking this is probably residential in the UGB. SubArea 10 is an interesting one, and it's interesting partially with, on the next slide we'll get to, not quite yet, SubArea 13 north of it. So this is where you've got Dutch Canyon Road, and where you go off into the area that's the foot. That part of the problem with developing that is getting your, I think it's your wastewater, your sewer out there. And so maybe if you have more land that is developing in Areas 8, 10, and 13, amongst them, they can carry some of the costs and make some of that land out in the foot more developable. So a lot, large part of SubArea 10, I wouldn't imagine, would come in. And SubArea 9, we need to discuss it. It's highly constrained, it's not really at this point under consideration. But if it made some sense to grab a piece of it, then there's nothing that prevents us from doing that. So these subareas, exactly how we have them drawn, we tried to draw them as smart as we could, but at a certain point, it doesn't matter if we're taking a little bit of SubArea 9 and not the rest of it. Just have to write findings around all of that. SubArea 10, we're thinking about as commercial, potential residential urban reserve area. Then on the next one, SubArea 13, you've got some big parcels there. You don't have big parcels in very many places. The costs of infrastructure are going to be medium, so they're not as high as some places, but they're not particularly low. Looking at this as a potential urban reserve, and, you know, targeting, and I suspect, I wouldn't be surprised to see a big piece of SubArea 13 come in. And as we're choosing where to have land come in, we'll be trying as much as we can to prioritize following property lines, tax lines, because it's much better not to cut a person's tax lot in half.
And that's why there will, there will be certain instances where we're bringing in constrained land, because it's within a parcel, and we don't want to truncate the parcel as much as we can avoid doing that. So the total acreage would be greater than the 410, but some of it won't be buildable, we're just making sure the math works best.
And we're held to a standard of what's reasonable in terms of making the math work. We're not held to a decimal point, essentially. Call a decimal point not reasonable. And then we head up north to Areas, well, most of this is Area 19. We're considering a piece of this. The southeast piece of this might have some decent connections in with existing neighborhoods. Areas 17 and 18 and 20 aren't really under consideration, because they're highly constrained. Area 18 isn't adjacent to the UGB. You wouldn't want to bring in a big, long cherry stem to get Area 18 in. It's also highly constrained. And Area 17 is just north of, remind me of what that public land is.
Yeah, that's the city's Vista Park property.
Thank you, I always forget that one. Vista Park is somehow hard. And so that's not going to ever develop as a neighborhood necessarily. And so bringing Area 17, even if it was a little less constrained in, wouldn't make a whole lot of sense. So I think we'll probably be picking and choosing pieces of Area 19.
Urban reserves.
Yes, urban reserves. And then we head up to Area 21, and again, this is not an area that I expect the northwest piece of this subarea to come in, but more the eastern pieces, and maybe along whatever that, those roads are that win...
Wickstrom.
Wickstrom, sorry. And...
Alber.
Incidentally, I have a hard time reading. So, and this is the only area that has a little piece of high-value forest agricultural land in it. It's a small amount of land in comparison. So I think that will probably be okay, because the areas that we're looking at, none of them are predominantly farm or forest land. And then the next slide, please? So our next steps, as I mentioned, are figuring out the specific areas to include in the urban growth boundary and urban reserves. So for example, this little piece of Area 6, it's possible that that piece of Area 6 might well be identified as an appropriate area to bring in. It's less constrained, it would create connectivity between subareas 7 and 5. I wouldn't be surprised if that ended up being urban reserves if it was brought in. Trying to think of, you know, what makes a decent urban form by the time we're done with this, so you don't have weird branches stretching out.
There are a lot of housing up there already, and fairly big lots.
Yeah.
So they come into the city, we, they come onto our tax roll, and...
When they annex in.
When they annex in, and it's, each lot, individual owner would have to annex in. And some of those lots might be divisible, big enough?
Some of them maybe.
Possibly, possibly, depends on where the house is sitting on the lot.
A lot of the houses are right in the middle, and there's not a lot of...
I think the real urban, the real buildable land is right where that arrow points.
Yeah.
Little piece to the southwest is a little bit of a bigger parcel.
That Area 6 doesn't actually have houses, I might be wrong with my orientation here, but does Area 6 have dwellings on it right now?
So Area 6, where it's outlined, does. I mean, it's a fully developed neighborhood, they have a community water system and their own septic. To the southwest, where the arrow's pointing, that's mostly vacant. There may be one house, you know, here or there, on a very large lot. But then I believe to the, to the further west, outside of the blue area, where you have those teeny tiny lots, a lot of that's just highly constrained and not currently built on.
Isn't there lots, is this area where there's lots already that are established, not built on?
Correct.
If I remember correctly, there's quite a few.
Yeah, and there was a big, there was quite the history with that, I don't have it fresh in my mind. There may have been some lawsuits on that, because of the way they were divided up in such a small manner, while still in the county and outside of a city. Again, I don't have that full history, but yeah.
So, there's, yeah, there's also the area at the end of Callahan, the Briarwood and pass that, that's all, Raymond Creek LLC and something else, LLC owns a ton of land back in there. And if I remember correctly, those lots are divided up? Or is that...
There is an area in Raymond Creek area that is already in the city's UGB, and that's the place that, yeah, that Beth's been referring to as the foot, sort of, it kind of juts out.
Yeah, the area I'm referring to is, is at, the access would be at the end of Callahan, and it goes up that way, but then it also goes to the north, which would be towards Raymond Creek.
Okay. If it was within the half mile or mile, it would have been something we looked at.
Okay.
If it's beyond that, it's not, it's not looked at.
I know they have, I've heard that they've had a water problem back there too. The only reason I bring that up is because if there is a bunch of lots that are already divided back there, does that potentially make it kind of an emphasis to look at the volume?
Still goes, no, I mean, it still goes back to serviceability.
A little section of red and system, so that's scaffolding company?
Yeah, SDB or scaffolding, I think so, Bill, yeah.
In that area, I think we're in Area 5 there, that would be looked at for urban reserves.
Sense of, for these other lots above that, and when I go up there and travel, see anything I get about, see residential?
Right. Yeah, and so likely if 5, that north end of 5 came in, you know, the areas near the highway, likely we would look at those for more commercial uses, and then off the highway, you know, residential. Although, again, if this goes, if most of this is brought in as urban reserves, we're not designating exactly what the use would be at that time.
I have a question, just being back on what you had mentioned, Laurie. It sounds as if a lot of the lots that are being looked at, the majority of them seem to be going more towards the urban reserve versus coming into the...
Yeah, I guess how you can think of it is, areas where it's going to be easier to serve the parcels, and that are closer to existing UGB would come in as UGB, and then the areas that are further out from existing services, we would consider for urban reserves.
I'll just mention that your UGB land needs 59 acres...
That's the other...
Compared to your urban reserve, which is 360 acres.
Right, so the question I actually have is, are we going to meet that 59-acre requirement? Given that I'm just hearing more, it sounds like more of this land goes into the reserve. So how much is this exercise going to achieve, bringing stuff in now, or is this...
No, this would, this would absolutely be identifying the 59 acres we need.
We'll have it.
Yeah, yeah, there's over 1,000 unconstrained acres within this area, study area.
And just looking at the areas that we identified, and doing a very gross count of it, I think we are coming up, you've got 410 acres, 419 maybe? Yeah, 419 that are needed, and there were over 500, 525 acres that were unconstrained in all of the areas that we're looking at. So I wouldn't be surprised to see us, you know, slip in a little bit of areas like 6 and less of some of the areas like 19, that just made a little bit less sense, so.
Beth, are you able, sometime, maybe, like, on like 8 is put, how many acres is 8, approximately?
I have that information. What I can tell you, just looking at 8, is it's going to be somewhere right around 100 acres.
Yeah, just to kind of give us an idea that 8, you know, 100, there's all we need right there for...
Urban, yeah, for UGB, that's more than...
Or 7, or whichever one you decide, but we, once we learn how big they are, you'll see that...
Yeah.
Quite a few choices.
Yeah, yeah, well, I will say, maybe 8's a little closer to 80, but 13 is certainly about 100. It's just the way we had to divide things up to make the tax lots work and to not be over 100.
Each of those numbers can't be over 100 acres.
None of them are over 100 acres.
Does that include the constrained, or did you remove the constraints?
Uh...
It must include, because there's...
I think it includes the constraints.
Bigger.
So like, areas, if you go back to one of the earlier maps, where it's showing everything, Areas, keep going back a little further, 22 and 23, each of them end up being, a little bit further back, please.
Yeah.
There we go. Area 22 ends up being somewhere around 80 acres or so. And Area 3 is about the same sort of size, so.
There just wasn't a way to divide it to keep it...
Yes.
At 100.
Yes.
I would have liked there to be fewer areas, but yes.
Back to where we were.
Yep, and so in terms of next steps, what we've got to do is actually choose the areas, finalize the specific areas for UGB and urban reserves, write findings around that, write a few more findings in support of all of this, because you'll be getting a big, I don't know, I think it's about 100, 150-page document in support of this. Write the much shorter, easier-to-read 50-year-plan document. Do our next and last Planning Commission-City Council Joint Work Session, and then start with the county work sessions that they've requested, and then the public hearings.
Now, go to county. They don't have to agree, do they?
You don't have to, the county's been involved in this whole process the whole time, their county planners are attending the Stakeholder Advisory Committee meetings. So they're fully aware of the whole process and have had the opportunity to provide input the whole time, to write, I mean...
Have they been providing input and helping, like, do they seem supportive?
Yes, and, you know, when they see something that they need to bring to our attention, they do.
That's why I was emphasizing that little strip of Area 5, because I've been told a number of times, it's really hard to picture that on a map, literally drawing on the map, because it's so thin.
Two things I have then, is, one, how long ago, like, did St. Helens, have they done a UGB, so the county would have gone through one of these recently? Was it since our last one?
That I do not know for sure. Yeah, our last one was in 2011, and appeals were resolved in 2015.
And then could, is there any changes possibly after county work sessions or after public hearings? Do they talk a little bit about the lines at that point?
Well, they've requested one internal work session and two public work sessions. So presumably, one or all three of those would be done before the city hearings are finished, because it would be very good to know if they have input there. And I would have to imagine, Laurie, as we have the draft map, that we'd want to send county staff a copy of that, say, this is what we're thinking about.
Yeah. Yeah, and they've seen, you know, they've seen the mapping here that we provided during the Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting. But certainly, you know, I think we'll be looking to have that internal work session here.
And I'm sure they're watching our meetings.
Luba wouldn't be too involved unless it was challenged there somewhere along the way.
Yeah, Luba doesn't get involved unless this gets appealed. So either at the city level or at the county level. Otherwise, they would be hands off.
So what we're trying to do as much as possible is build an analysis that's not going to be challenged. So provide strong enough findings, provide enough opportunities for for input, those kind of things.
Hopefully, everything's finalized for those last couple meetings, but it that's education, get out to the people what we're looking at and why we're doing what we're doing. But hopefully, the lines won't have to be changed at that time.
Correct, and we'll discuss that a little bit more, kind of tie that, remember that question because we'll tie that back in during our agenda item on this later.
I do, I would just like to suggest putting water and sewer on these maps so that we have a better idea of connectivity, of like crucial stuff. I mean, it was great to hear you say, oh, yeah, that, you know, sewer line terminates at at Old Portland and Callahan, but it'd be great to be able to see that.
I think once we get to the areas we're seriously considering because those are the ones that are near utilities, otherwise you wouldn't see anything. But yes, that's a layer we could turn on internally, but that is not. Well, let me think about that actually, Marty, because we don't have our utility lines publicly available for safety purposes. But I'd need to talk to Dave about that and see how he felt, our Public Works Director.
Because if we get down to, hey, we need something in 5 or 8, it would be nice to know, well, which one's closer to connectivity? Which one's easier to service?
Yeah, and there's a, there's a whole write up on this that describes where existing utilities terminate, how far away, kind of like, you know, 0.1 miles or, you know, 0.25. And and so that really spells it out for each sub area. So we have done that analysis.
We can bring that, it just seemed like too much information to bring in quite yet. But there's, I don't know, that that's, that's like a five or eight page part of the the report for each of the sub areas.
Oh, that's great. If the information's out there, that's.
Yeah, yeah, it is there. I can tell you that for, you know, Area 8 in particular, that's surrounded by the Dutch Canyon Estates to the east. There's, you know, there's multiple roads that are stubbed to that, to that eastern edge of 8, including utilities, water and sewer and roads just waiting basically to get to get punched through. So in those areas, it makes a whole lot of sense to bring that in for housing because it's already been set up that way.
And this is, I think, part of the reason to do urban reserves is so that you can set up more as you're bringing areas into the UGB. You can set up the other areas that you're looking at bringing into the UGB so that in 10 or 20 years, when you're doing that, you made decisions in the past that support those areas for development more later.
Fellivers will be looking for that information somewhere down the line.
I defer to Laurie on that.
Yes, more than.
Because as I see, you have more than 100 acres designated for possible UGB and we probably don't need that many, so we have to determine which ones.
Yeah.
Are our priority main ones for UGB.
Are you limited to the 59?
Yes, you're limited to 59 acres for urban growth boundary.
Unconstrained.
Unconstrained.
Yeah, unconstrained net, yeah.
But it's easier the next time you go through this because you've established urban reserves and you've been able to do your your facilities planning for that.
OK. Any more questions?
The question I have is, I know that there hasn't been, says to be decided, but next work session, is that going to be later in the summer, you think?
I think we were talking about in towards, well, here, look, I'll look at the schedule. We're looking at in towards August, I would imagine. The final SAC meeting in early August and I assume the work session in later August. Yes, sir. Ah, you're going to someplace nice and cool, I guess.
I don't know.
I was thinking warm, but you know, it's summer, so.
Right, all right, thank you. Meeting's adjourned.